We get a lower. I think.
Yeah, what?
Lower.
Click on Ahmed, see if it comes up.
Hi.
Hi, Ahmed. Click on Nick Fassendola.
Will you only click?
Click on the name.
How we doing?
Hey, Nick. Hi, Nick. Okay. It's 1:10. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Dayton Stormwater Committee, Wednesday, June 21st, 2023. Call the meeting to order at 1:10 PM. Located at the Old Town Hall, Upper Level Meeting Room 111 Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. 02715. This is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for internet posting at www.dighton-ma.gov and YouTube. The Zoom meeting address is HTTPS colon slash slash, excuse me, US02WEBZOOM.us/j/83325769369? PWD equals AKW4EM, capital R, small h, capital V, zero XXD, zero capital FWIRMU, lowercase TLA09, capital Fdz09. Meeting ID is 83325769369. The passcode is 763947. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In attendance, Mrs. Caldonia.
Hi, yeah.
Mr. Ferry.
Yeah.
Mr. Woods.
Yeah.
S. Gulat. Absent is Mr. Agia. And then for public, we have Mrs. Bosale from Ein Street.
Where is Jim? Because his truck is right there.
Lisa said he sent an email to me saying he couldn't come upstairs because he's alone, but he could zoom in. And Mr. David Phillips. Mr. Phillips is a member of the Conservation Commission, and I'm hoping he's going to be appointed to replace Mr. Mello, representing the Conservation Commission on his board. Mr. Mello has resigned all of his town appointments.
Mr. Mello.
Yes.
I just wanted to note so everybody knew that Mr. Mello went in with the years of service to the Conservation Commission, and we find that really remarkable that he dedicated all those years.
God bless him.
I'll accept a motion that this committee send a letter to Mr. Mello in recognition for his many years of service.
Let's talk about that.
Service. I need a motion.
Oh, I make the motion to send Mr. Mello a letter of recognition from the Stormwater Committee.
There a second?
Yeah.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion unanimous. So, Mr. Phillips, when we have discussion on an item, if you wish to be recognized, if you would just put your hand up, you know, and Mrs. Bosale, if she has, she knows what to do, but if there was something we're discussing and you want to either ask a question or make a comment, just give me the sign, okay? I request that we take agenda item 5A, Brook Street Solar Third Party Review Report, Site Visit and Photos, out of order. Is there a motion?
Yes, so more.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Yeah.
By Mr. Ferry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Woods?
Aye.
And Mr. Gulat is aye. So, Ahmed and Nick, have you had a chance to look at the report that came in from Green International Affiliates? Are you muted? Okay. Ahmed, have you had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Before we get into discussion on this, the Stormwater Committee requested a third party review of the Brook Street solar basins, drainage basins, because following the reconstruction and the rains that we've had, the basins did not appear to drain timely. The report came in. Is available for public review. I'll just briefly touch on some of these points. And this was signed by Saiyan M. Saiyan P., Water Resources Site Group Leader. And I will mention that Mr. Pillian and I had a site visit with good for his name, a gentleman that did the site visit and took the notes on all of this. In any case, is anybody present from Green International via Zoom? I thought they were going to Zoom in. That's strange. Anyhow, to just summarize quickly.
Would you like anything in problem?
Yeah, if you could, I'd text him or something. The Plans and Response Letter Were Reviewed for Compliance with Applicable Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Management Standards, Mass. DEP Stormwater Handbook, Volume 1, Chapter 1. We performed a site visit on June 7th to observe site conditions. Based on our review of the submitted information and the site visit, we have the following comments. The item in the Stormwater Management Book, "Stormwater Management System Shall Be Designed So That the Post-Development Peak Discharge Rates Do Not Exceed Pre-Development Peak Discharge Rates." His observations, comments. Although the stormwater basins as built differ from the approved design, designer has shown that the stormwater basins reduce peak discharge rates. However, during a site visit, the basins were observed not functioning as intended. Standing water was observed within the basins and tadpoles and other animals observed in the standing water indicate the water is not discharging within 72 hours as mandated by the Mass. DEP regulations. In the photographs that are on the table over there, if you look at the ones that show close-ups of rocks, small rocks, and if you look close enough, you can see that some of the tadpoles. Item 2 from the state manual, "Loss of annual recharge to groundwater shall be eliminated or minimized through the use of environmentally sensitive site design, low-impact development techniques, stormwater best management practices, and good operation and maintenance. At a minimum, the annual recharge from the post-development site shall approximate the annual recharge from pre-development conditions based on soil type. This standard is met when the stormwater management system is designed to infiltrate the required recharge volume as determined in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook." The comment from the engineer was, "As described in item 1, basin 1 is not functioning as intended. Discharge from this basin is accounted for in the stormwater calculations. However, because this basin is not exfiltration as designed, the peak flow rates and recharge quantities are not being achieved." Note number 3 from the Stormwater Handbook, Mass. DEP Stormwater Management Standard 8. "A plan to control construction-related impacts include erosion, sedimentation, and other pollutant sources during construction and land disturbance activities. Construction period erosion sedimentation and pollution prevention plan shall be developed and implemented." Comment from the engineer. "Vegetation has not been fully established on-site, which has resulted in soils not being stabilized. There are several potential detrimental impacts from this. The basins may accumulate sediment, which will result in decreased storage volume and decreased rate of exfiltration. At various locations, the berm surrounding the stormwater basins has been constructed to steeper than 3:1 slopes. Without the slopes fully stabilized, excuse me, erosion of the slope may result in future breakout of the impounded water. This is more likely with the retention times exceeding the 72-hour maximum allowable retention times." And Mass. DEP Stormwater Management, item 4, "A long-term operation and maintenance plan shall be developed and implemented to ensure that stormwater management systems function as designed. A long-term O&M plan is critical to ensure that the stormwater BMP's best management practice function as designed, and that erosion within the site is minimized. All BMPs shall be repaired and maintained as designed." Green also has the following additional comments. Although the designer has shown that peak discharge rates are reduced under the redesigned conditions, the dewatering time in basins 1, he's got 1 and 3, there were only 2 basins, so I believe that should be basins 1 and 2, shall continue to be monitored. Feel observation indicates that the basins are not functioning as designed to drain within 72 hours. Basin, this says 3 again, I believe should be basin 2, is intended to discharge low flow through a pair of 6-inch pipes. However, site observation indicated that the basin is not rated to direct all low flow to these pipes. The low point of the basin appears to be at the northern end of the basin." And it says, "Please feel free to contact me," and this is the report that was signed by Saiyan. Saiyan.
It was you that did the reading, Andrew.
Yes, it was. Andrew.
Carrie's trying to reach Andrew right now.
I think it's a Feingold, Feingold.
I don't know the last name, but Carrie's trying to reach Andrew for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. You want to send a text down to Jim and ask him if he wants to tell him we're discussing Brook Street? Ask him if he wants to sign into Zoom?
Can they hear it fine?
Uh, yeah.
Nick, can you hear us okay? Okay.
Okay, so before I ask Nick and Mr. Hafiz to speak, does anybody have any questions at this point? Or you just want to, I'll have them speak to the contents of the report and then we'll discuss it further? Okay, so Mr. Hafiz and Nick, you're up. Comments? Anything about the report?
Yeah, can I go first, Nick?
Yes, go ahead.
So, thank you very much for inviting us to this meeting. I have gone through the report, and what I was expecting is if, if Green would have some comments on the design of the, of the basin, and this is what I thought they would be reviewing, the, the design of the basin based on, on everything that has been done before, like the, the boreholes that have been taken, or I can't remember if this is the right name or not, but like the samples from the soil and the soil that has been replaced and the type of soil that has been filled and the size of the basin and, and everything else, but I, that, that's what I was thinking. Like, I wanted to, I, I wanted to see if they, they say, okay, the design is, is adequate, but it's not working because of, so what he's pointing out here is the observations that, and conclusions that we, we've all made before, that it's possibly because of the lack of vegetation on-site and stabilization. There is sediments that have been, have accumulated at the bottom of the basin, which makes it not discharge in 72 hours. So, that's, that's the, the comment that I have on this. I didn't see any comments on the design. It's just stating what we've all been seeing before, so. Nick, please go ahead if you have any comments.
Sure, so, you know, quick review, you know, of the, of the report. As Ahmed said, doesn't really bring to light any, any new findings, any, any detailed information on where improvements could possibly be made. I think that, that was, you know, that's how we understood it. That was the goal of getting a third-party review. You know, it looks like they just kind of went over some of the stormwater management standards, which, which is good information, but it, it doesn't help to get to a solution. You know, and that's what we thought the, the town was contracting a consultant for was to, you know, possibly help identify what they believe could be concerns and where improvements could be made. You know, obviously, the site isn't fully stabilized. You know, that's a concern that I also have. I know Ahmed's been working with some local contractors and trying to get somebody out there to get the site seated. Yeah, I believe we had, he had somebody in place and that fell through, so that's why the site hasn't been seeded to date, but he's still working to get somebody out there as soon as possible. I mean, I was out there with Todd. I mean, I'm sure Todd had internal reports or correspondence with the committee. You know, all the bad material was pulled out of those bases.
Andrew's trying to get in.
What? Can you hear me?
I'm sorry. Andrew's trying to get in. I'm fine.
Oh, okay.
Hang on just a bit, Nick. Is Carrie in the office today?
She is, but Andrew's locked.
All right, all right. Would you text her and ask her if she would zoom in? Because some of this has got to go back to the planning board, because this, this company was hired through the planning board. I mean, yes, they're responding to stormwater questions, but I think Carrie needs to know this, because I've got some questions myself that rather than repeating them over and over again, if she can zoom in, it would be helpful. I don't know what was in the letter, per se. And he refers to a as-built summary letter dated February 27th. And the drainage plan, but I don't know what, I, I don't know the description of the duties that would have been given to Green International in the contract to do this work.
Okay, I just asked her to.
Okay.
I don't know if she's busy and who's going to be able to do it, but I asked her.
Okay. So. Who's on now from Green? I can't read that.
Hi, this is Andy Feingold.
Hi, Andy. It's Nancy Gulat.
Hi, Nancy.
Um, did, did you come on in time to hear any of Nick Fassendola's comments?
I, I did not. I did not.
Okay. Nick, briefly, would you just indicate what it is and what, and also, Mr. What, what Mr. Hafiz says, what they were expecting in this report for, for example, recommendations of things like that. So, Nick, if you would just want to give a quick summary so that Andy can hear what it is that appears to be missing or information that is needed?
Sure, so it was the understanding or of Grasshopper and myself that this went out to third-party review to, we all knew the issues with the
Okay.
stormwater basins, you know, they don't, they weren't draining and, you know, so I think they were looking for possible causes of these concerns, of these issues, possibly how to remedy them without reinventing the wheel as the site's fully constructed. But I can't speak to the, to the Stormwater Committee. Nancy, I'll let you comment on that, but you know, that's what we anticipated. Obviously, a review of the documents I had sent over, I did, you know, some stormwater volumetric calculations
Sure.
on, you know, comparisons to proposed
Right.
versus the as-built. And as you noted in your letter, that all seemed to, you know, all the volumes seemed to work out. You know, the big issue is it's not draining. I'm not sure how much backstory you had, but there was a lot of unsuitable material that was pushed into these excavations when they were initially built, being announced to, unbeknownst to Todd and myself, while we weren't on-site during inspections, and that kind of all got covered over, and then we did some test pits in the basins, and you know, that's how all that was discovered. So, you know, what happened was, I mean, the bottoms of these basins were excavated out up to 10 to 15 feet, title, title 5 sand, placed to fill that void of what was installed for unsuitable materials. And that was done in both basins. Basin 3, it was only about, you know, sections were 5 to 8 feet deep as far as the removal went. You know, and Todd and I both witnessed, you know, made several inspections and to make sure that all that work was being done properly and that the material coming in was met the standard for the clean sand. And it all did. You know, what I did have them do was I had them cover the basin bottoms with crushed stone. Before that crushed stone, there's a layer of filter fabric as, you know, when this work was being done, the sites, they weren't stabilized. So, I didn't want that sand layer getting gummed up by silty water that may be running into those reconstructed basins. So, I see that the basins have gotten progressively worse as they were functioning well right after the work was done, but it seems to have, you know, my, I guess I'll go guess on why they're not draining currently is because they're, you know, clogged up with sediment and primarily that the filter fabric layer that we had installed is really gummed up.
So, that, that's, that's a potential cause. The, another potential cause would be if groundwater is simply up to that level. Do, do you have records for where ground, groundwater is?
I mean, test pits were done. We didn't do the initial design on this, but test pits were done and observed by Todd, and I believe groundwater was at, let's see, I mean, it varied because the, the site sloped.
Sure.
You know, even at its highest point, it should be a couple feet below grade, the, the basic grade right now. It's at least
Because in, in visiting the site, that was, that was our first thought was that it was actually groundwater. It was the reason it wasn't draining, rather than an engineering or construction issue.
Yeah, I mean, for that front basin, basin 1, even, even when they did the work and really excavated down and replaced all that bad material, there wasn't, you know, they weren't in a huge dewatering situation.
Sure.
Groundwater was so high that they couldn't get the work done. Yeah, as you got down like 10, 15 feet, yeah, it was wet and soggy down there, but you know, the first couple feet
We're not.
We're not, yeah, we're not, no major concern. I think all the old test hole logs were provided or should be on file, but we can get those to if needed. Now, basin 3 from the design that was approved, that always appeared to not be an infiltration basin. It was essentially, the bottom was set at the groundwater.
Right, and that, and that one was designed as a detention, not as an infiltration.
Yeah, yeah, and I saw your comments on there. If you're going to have it sloped, you know, slope it towards the outlet.
Right.
Which I agree, and that should alleviate those, those concerns.
Right.
In that back.
Gentlemen, if I could interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
We, we talked about basins 1 and 3. I've been out there. Where's basin 2? There's only 2 basins out there. So, I think basin 3 is the shallow one, kind of on the southeast corner?
That's correct. I think the initial, the original design way back when, when it was going through permitting, there was, there was maybe 3 basins, and then one likely got removed and the, the numbers never changed. So, as it was approved, that one has always been referred to as basin 3.
Okay.
And the front basin is basin 1. But there's only 2 basins on the property.
Okay, okay. So, basin 3 is, so the current basin 2 was formerly basin 3, basically, is what we're trying to figure out.
Correct. The long, the long basin in the back, that's 3.
The long, shallow one in the southeast section.
Yes.
That was, maybe that was 3 at one time, but it's physically, it's 2. So, it's, let's say it's been renumbered and there are, as long as we all agree, there's only 2, because I've been all over that site and never saw another one. I just want to note that Mrs. Easterday has joined the meeting, as has Mike Mullin, the town administrator. So, Carrie and Mr. Mullin, what we're talking about right now is I read into the record the comments from Andy of Green International relative to what the stormwater management rules from DEPR and what the comments are. And Nick Fassendola, the current engineer for this project for Grasshopper, was discussing what they were looking for that is not in this letter that I have here. I just want to comment. In looking at this and having been out on the site with Todd and Andrew on the 7th of this month, when I took all the pictures, the last column on this report says meets requirements, yes, no, are not determined yet. It appears that none of these meet requirements when you compare your comments to the Mass. DEP Stormwater Handbook. So, if they're all not determined yet, is there another report coming that's going to give us more information, recommendations, or give us specific answers? Yes, they meet the requirements, or no, they don't? Not determined yet, to me, is not the correct answer based on what I read into the record. So, I need, somebody needs to clarify that.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. The, it wasn't, the, the intent of that wasn't really to address the, the current situation as, as, as visited on-site. It was done with the understanding that the design was, was meeting it. Typically, these peer reviews were looking at more at the design issues. So, the, it was not determined yet, thinking that revisions were going to be coming to the construction, and it's work in progress rather than a final construction condition. You, you, I agree with you that as it's currently on-site, it would have been more appropriate to say, no, it does not meet current requirements.
One of the questions that Mr. Hafiz had, Carrie, I'll address this one to you, is because he also commented, they were expecting, I'll say, more definitive information than it is in this report.
Definitive with regards to?
What was? What was Kerry, Mrs. Easterday, what was in the letter or the contract with Green as far as what they were expected to do as part of this review?
For their proposal?
Yes. In other words, what were they asked to do when they submitted a proposal? So like, I'm wondering is what they were, what they were asked to do and what they proposed to do, is it truly what was expected by uh, both Grasshopper and the town?
So they're pleased to provide, so their proposal that they submitted on March twenty first. Uh, Brook Street Solar Facility uh, Stormwater Management System Drainage As-Built dated November twenty seven. So they were gonna receive, uh, our peer review will consist of the following received documents. Was the drainage review, the stormwater commercial, forgive me. Brook Street Solar Commercial Solar Facility Stormwater Management System Drainage As-Built dated November seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Proposed the following scope of work and fee to perform a peer review of the submitted drainage as-built to ensure compliance with the approved site plan for the side site. And then perform one site visit to observe drainage system, stormwater basins, review of the drainage as-built and provide review comments to the planning board. Total lump sum for twenty-five hundred.
So Andrew, is there another report coming?
No, that, this, this was intended as the report for, that um, completed the work for this proposal.
All right. So I will just look at note number one, the comment. Although the stormwater basins as-built differ from the approved design, designer has shown that the stormwater basins reduce peak discharge rates. However, during a site visit, the basins were observed not functioning as intended. Standing water was observed within the basins and tadpoles and other animals observed in the standing water. Indicate the water is not discharging within seventy-two hours as mandated by Mass DEP regs. So back to my original comment. If the stormwater basins as currently built, which is the second building, because the first ones were wrong and they dug it up. And the second basins, the ones out of there now, were supposed to be built according to the plans approved by planning board. It says the basins as-built differ from the approved design. Although the designer has shown that the stormwater basins reduce peak discharge rates. But if they don't reduce peak discharge rates within seventy-two hours, and we know that the design is not what was originally approved by the planning board, where do we go from here? Anybody who knows the answer to that? I could guess and say they gotta be done over, but I don't want to make that decision. And now Nick, I understand you were not the original designer of these plans, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. When it was reviewed and approved, that was, it was Atlantic as the record engineer.
Well, and also the gentleman, I believe, the engineer that actually designed him is deceased. Um. I, I still have a question. When I go through the report and I keep coming back to, and this was the main question, do the basins meet the requirements of the original plans? Go ahead, Mr. Halfas.
Yeah, I, I think what uh, green means here is that the, the shape of the basin does not like the as-built shape of the basin is not exactly as the approved plans, but uh, again, I'll go back to the point that I've made and what, what you have made also, Miss Goulart, that uh, the, the, the report uh, does not say uh, like by, like to, to identify the problem by elimination. They have reviewed the design, the type of soil. Yes, uh, for example, the uh, the, this, a uh, uh, what is it called? The uh, not retention. If an infiltration basin is suitable for this, for this uh, site. So we eliminate the, the fact that it could be uh, a wrong design. So this is out of the question. And then we have two possible scenarios, like uh, Mr. Feingold said, it could be the uh, under, underground water uh, level. The water table is high in this uh, location, or it could be sediments filling up the uh, if we establish that it can be an infiltration basin. So it could be sediments or it could be a high water table there. So uh, and then it comes with the recommendation. Uh, this should be done if it, if it's water, high water table. So this, this should be done. If it's uh, if it's sediments, that should be done. Uh, yeah, and I agree with you when you say every, all comments uh, are not uh, not determined yet, uh, who, who or when they will be determined. Like, I'm, I'm not sure.
Right. We, we, we can revise that resubmit just to, to clarify that. I, we, we agree that that was, was in the most appropriate response. It should say, no, they do not meet the, the regulations.
Okay. And also on the design, like, sorry to interrupt, but on the first point, uh, differ from the approved design. Does it differ in the complete design? Like, was it supposed to be uh, a detention basin and it's a, or retention basin and it's a an infiltration basin, or it's just the shape, but the, the volume is, is appropriate? So it has to be a little bit clear here.
From, from our review, it was, it was not constructed in accordance. However, the calculations demonstrate that it will meet the um, design intent if it's functioning as intended. But with our site review, with the conditions we saw while we were out there, it's not functioning as it's intended. Um, the standing water i- is an issue that, that we would uh, that would need to be rectified in order to meet sta- meet design requirements.
A- and the reason it's not functioning, does it have, when you say it's not built according to the design, is it uh, like elevation or?
Elevation, elevations vary. Um. I, I mean, there, there's gonna always be some, some variation. However, there was, in terms of the elevation, there were significant differences, six inches a foot in places. Um. But if it was, if it was draining within seventy-two hours, it would be and, and meeting that the peak flow rates. Then it would be functioning as intended. Right now, with it not draining, it, it's it's not functioning as intended. And over time too, if it's not able to drain, it won't be able to meet the peak flow rates as well, because some volume of the basin's gonna be taken up by the water that's sitting there.
Yeah. Okay. And, and for, as for the recommendations or what, uh?
I mean, our, our recommendation would, would be to determine, if you can determine why it's not functioning, um, without, no, without having that. I, if you were to do testing and determine groundwater is high, it's a different solution than if you say ground, no groundwater is ten feet lower. And it's still not behaving right, then it's a, a construction issue. It's not, uh, the materials aren't right, or the filter fabric has gotten clogged up with material. Um, it's a different solution than if ground, if the groundwater's high, no matter what you construct there, it's, it's gonna be, remain full of water. So we, we can't tell you how to solve it. We would say, we would say the first step would be trying to identify what's creating the issue.
I have a question for either of the engineers. If it's groundwater, then we aren't talking an infiltration basin. We're gonna be talking uh, detention or retention, right? Somebody?
To a certain
Is that correct?
Options, you raised the bottom of the basin floor. Um, you know, there's, there, there's, there's ways to work around that. Um, but like I said, when I was out there, Todd's a soil evaluator. I'm a soil evaluator. We witnessed the excavation. I didn't do the initial test holes. I mean, I highly doubt that it's groundwater.
Okay.
But I mean, Ahmed, uh, we're, we're scheduled to start some additional work and somebody will have an excavator on site. If the stormwater committee wants to, to see a, a te- an additional test hole just outside the basin and we'll dig down and we'll verify current conditions today. But that would make everybody uh, you know, kind of better with where we're going with this.
Nick, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to, to cut in on, um, but if they, if they originally intended this as an infiltration, would, would there be a record of what? There must have been some initial testing done to show that they were separated from groundwater with the initial design.
Yeah, we have that. I mean, Todd sent that to me. I can get it over to you.
Okay.
I don't know if you, if you've been provided that information.
No, I, I, we, I, as far as I know, we've not, I've not seen it.
Yeah. No, I have that. I can uh, I can email Kerry and she can get it over to you. I just, I have, you know, easy to find place. Um, but I mean, as far as through the chair, I mean, I think what Green International is saying here is that the shape, the volume, the constructed basin, the practices, everything is satisfactory for the most part, except for we have standing water. If there was no standing water, as Andrew stated, there'd be no, there'd be no issue today. Um, you know, basins, they get drawn, you know, in, in AutoCAD on a piece of paper as a very certain shape. It's very difficult to get everything exactly the same shape, or to have a three-hundred-foot-long basin like in the back be completely board-level flat. So you're gonna have some undulations, you're gonna have some, you know, the grade's gonna vary six inches. I mean, it's very hard to even pick up six inches on a, on a one-foot contour survey. So there's gonna be some variation. Now, the question is, you know, that designers like myself, when I review an as-built plan, I look at it and I say, is the variation gonna impact the functionality of the basin? Does it have enough volume? Is the bottom area big enough? So you have enough infiltration to the bottom? Are the outlets in the right place? So it's discharging the appropriate amount of water um, at certain levels as is approved in the design. I think all those things are satisfactory, and that's what I detailed in my letter. It's not a perfect construction job by any means. But what's been reconstructed from when we dug all that muck and stump grindings, all the other stuff out of the bottoms of the basins is good. Um, you know, my general opinion, I think I, that with the filter fabric there, filter fabric, it's great, but if you have, if you, if it's susceptible to being impounded by very fine material for a long period of time, it just clogs up and then it's, it it, it refuses to filter anymore. Um, so I think that's the main issue because like I said, the basins were draining. I mean, based on what Todd and I saw after, you know, a one-inch storm event, after um, you know, right when the work was completed and that filter fabric was doing its job. It was collecting those fines from, that were washing into the basins from the site. But now I think it's gotten to a point where it can't process that water anymore and it's just all gummed up. And that filter fabric needs to be removed. And the stone needs to be pulled, because if you look in the bottom of the basins, there you can see a fine layer of sediment, just, you know, from where the water has ponded and then slowly receded. Like, if you pick up some of those rocks in your hand, you're gonna have sediment all over your hand. It's just what the condition is out there. Um, so that's my opinion on the situation. I think it's combination of sediment entering those basins, and that's how it was designed and approved. There was no pre-treatment. There was no four-bays uh, approved on these. There was nothing there to, to kind of stop this. There's some erosion controls, but those only work for so long. Um, so that's where I think we need to go with this, but my, I guess I would say to Andrew is when we go in there and pull that stone and pull the filter fabric, are there any recommendations that your firm may have to prevent this from happening again? You know, I've recommended multiple times that a four-inch perforated sub-drain should have been included in the original design. It's DEP, it's in the standard DEP detail for infiltration basins to have a drain with a valve um, that you open and close as needed to, as basins get old and they get sort of clogged up, you have that ability to drain the basin down. Um, so if work's gonna be done, any additional work in these basins, I would like to see just a four-inch sub-drain laid flat perforated pipe that would kind of help collect and facilitate the water moving out of that basin if needed. Um, it still gives the basin a chance to infiltrate because the, the piping is perforated and water will flow through that. But if for some reason it gets clogged up or needs to be maintained or to sits in an unmaintained state for extended period of time, it will continue to function on its own. And it's a four-inch pipe. We're not talking about discharging, you know, ten CFS. We're talking about a small trickle of a discharge that just keeps these, this basin where it needs to be without standing water, preventing uh, concerns that the neighbors may have. That, that's my general opinion on the situation.
What, what I would add to that, Nick, and you, you touched on it with what you were saying, where typical infiltration basins will also have some kind of pre-treatment. And there, there is no uh, pre-treatment. There's no forbay for this basin. So it likely will clog up again from the, from the fines running off the site and coming into the basin. Um, so then you're not gonna be really getting the true infiltration that this basin is designed with. You're gonna, in a short period of time, it will clog and that four-inch pipe is, the sub-drain will be a primary outlet from this basin.
Possibly, and I mean, it all depends. I mean, it's gonna need to be maintained. There isn't, I believe there was an operation and maintenance plan approved, so it does require periodic cleaning out and redoing of the, the bottom surface. Um. But uh, you know, and that kind of circles back to the stabilization, you know, once there's
Right.
You know, eighty, ninety percent growth of grass on, on the surface of the array, you're not gonna get that same sediment loading that's causing these issues today. So I, I think it all starts with the stabilization. Generally, I wouldn't want to see any work done to these basins until the site's stabilized, or else we're gonna be doing this again in you know, three months after, you know, a, a large sum of money has been paid to rework the basins, pull the fabric, put new stone down. Or you're just chasing your tail at this point, is my general opinion. You know, the site needs to have significant stabilization. And once that occurs, replace the filter fabric, the basin should drain at that point. Um. But who knows? Like I said, the other option is while we have a machine on site for some other work that's gonna be done, we can poke a quick hole. Um. And, you know, if anybody from the town wants to come out and, and observe this test hole, I know Todd's not there anymore and that would, would have been fallen on him to do so. We, we can dig a hole, not in the basin. I don't want to go through and dig up all that sand that was in, installed. It would G be somewhere in the vicinity of the basin. Groundwater level's gonna be relatively consistent. You know, even if it's not in the actual bottom of the basin, um, we should still get the same results for groundwater. And it would be a better place to dig because you'll have the natural soil profile. Everything in that basin's all disturbed. I wouldn't even be able to tell you where groundwater was unless it was gushing out and hitting me in the face if I was in the hole. I need to see a, an area that hasn't been excavated, see a clean profile of the natural soils, so I can determine where those uh, markers are that tell me where the high groundwater levels are.
Nancy, can I say something?
Yes. Uh, Lisa?
Just to reiterate what Nick had said and what we've been saying on a lot of these sites still not stabilized. Um, Ahmed, you were revised amended order of conditions from the Conservation Commission that you received a copy of a couple of weeks ago. In the revised order, we required um, minimal tree clearing for the fire safety. Um, and we require that you contact me and I can do a site visit to check on that. I'm sure you read through it, but the invasive species removal. Like an Uncuspidatum, which is a Japanese knotweed. Um, so those are things needed to have before you can proceed with any additional work that was permitted. I just wanted to make sure that you read through it and you understand that.
I did read through it and these conditions were prior to issuing the certificate of compliance. It's not before the uh, the
We was, we specified that prior to additional tree clearing.
So what is additional? Uh, because I understood additional as, other than what has been approved in the, in the firm. So what is additional? Because I understood additional as other than what has been approved in the, in the firm.
The tree clearing that we approved this past month, that is a condition of approval. I want to discuss that further.
So i- if if the site stabilization and the basins are being reviewed under the Stormwater Committee like this like, like to be punished twice for the same thing by two different departments, I'm, I'm not sure. It's not like we're saying, no, it won't be done or it shouldn't be done. And, and trust me, we're we're trying our best to like we're doing things that we shouldn't be, like we're looking for the contractor for, for subcontractors to help them with that because they haven't been successful. And the first time we did it ourselves, the seeding, but to always look for the thing that needs to be done and stop everything on the project for that reason, nothing gets moved forward. It's a
But what you need to understand, Amen, is that as part of, under your performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act, you're required to ensure site stabilization and minimize any chance of any sediment going into the wetland. So the site is now exposed and not stabilized for what, two years? I don't know how long, two years. So the commission has given you plenty of time. We even granted you an extension on the order. So to allow you to do more site clearing and create more instability on that, with that project on that site, I, I think that would be, wouldn't be wise of us. So that's why it was discussed in the meeting and it was required in your order, your amended order. Your tree company that you've signed on with came to discuss it and I know you emailed me about that as well. He's clear about what needs to happen, so I just wanted to make sure that you understood it. Again, we didn't have to issue an amended order. We could have told you no more changes, so, but we did issue them.
But if I may comment, it's not like two different committees, a committee and a commission are both hitting you from all directions with different orders. I think it's clear to everybody, regardless whether you're a Conservation Commission or Stormwater Committee, or engineers involved with this. First of all, the state, the site has to be stabilized, which means you've got to get vegetation growing out there. I've got pictures sitting on the table here. I took thirty-some pictures that anyone can look at. And you can see the sections where the panels are that have green stuff. It's not grass, it's weeds, but at least it's growing. It's holding the soil. But you're going to see other areas that are completely bare, that the panels have been in as long as all the other panels, and yet nothing is growing at all. I thought what I was going to see when I went out there with Todd and Andrew was what I have seen in other solar farms. I expected to see green, maybe not grass, but green growing everywhere except where the basin work was done. And that's not what I saw. And those pictures that I took clearly show, there's a lot of ball spots out there. So whether it's the Stormwater Committee or the Conservation Commission, the main message is you've got to stabilize the site. They're both saying the same things, under different legislation. She's talking about the Wetlands Protection Act, but there's also a federal law, the Clean Water Act, and, and the EPA is involved with that. So it's not like we're coming at you from all directions and trying to confuse you and say, you've got to do this, you've got to. Number one, and even the engineer said, the site has to be stabilized. Once the site is stabilized, then let's take one branch off, no pun intended, but then the tree work that has been okayed can take place. And then the other side of this is, once it's stabilized, whether it's the recommendations made by Nick Facendola or by Andrew, then there can be something done about the basins. But everything I'm hearing is, without stabilization, CONCOM is saying, no, you're not cutting any more trees, or you're not going to be allowed to top trees or remove the trees that are causing shade. And, and from a stormwater perspective, we're saying looks like those basins can't be worked on until everything is stabilized. So I, I just want you to understand that. We're not trying to hit you from every direction. We're, I think we're trying to point out consensus is from everybody. You got to get something growing out there to hold the, the soil. And the other thing I got to tell you is, I expected to see in bare spots, I expected to see brown dark loom, which is what I've seen at other sites. So not only was there not grass growing, but if you look at the pictures that I took, some of it is hot pan and weeds don't even grow in it. There was, there were a couple of places as we walked from the big basin south towards the smaller basin that the ground was, I will say, squishy. And yet, when I looked underneath the panels that were to my right as I went south, the ground was bare. And I'm thinking, it's obviously wet where I'm walking, but nothing's growing underneath those panels. I'm not a soil expert. It just struck me as strange considering even in the middle of a drought around here, you drive down the road, you're going to see grass and weeds growing in cracks in the road. Because weeds and that, they grow everywhere. And yet there was places on that solar farm, there's nothing growing, which I, I can't explain it, except I don't know if besides seeding, there needs to be loom brought in. Again, I'm not a soil person, but when I see areas that are bald and there are weeds, I'm thinking there's, there's a soil situation here. But anyhow, I just wanted to clarify that about why you're hearing about stabilization. It's because there are certain rules and regulations that the Conservation Commission has to follow. There were rules and regulations, stormwater has to follow, but when you bring it all together, the, in, put the equation together, everything equals stabilization before you do anything else.
Okay, can I say something else?
Go ahead, Mr. Woods.
Nick mentioned groundwater. And, you know, right from the very beginning, you know, going way back when you came before us with the plans for the solar. Mrs. Boiselle is here and she can verify, but we, we said about how wet the front of that property is. And, and the stream that goes by their house comes around the corner and goes down Brook Street. Even the slightest rain, you, you produce a little stream over there. Everybody knew that that area was wet. And then the first company who put their retention basin in with the, with the stumps, I don't know why that happened. If the stumps are in there or have they been removed?
They're gone.
Okay, so then
And the rocks.
And the rocks. So, you know, we want this project over. I've been dealing with this project from day one. And I think other, other solar companies are looking at the town of Dayton now. Thanks to this mess, and they're staying away from us, which is probably a good thing.
There'll be a whole bunch of solar farms that have done really well in town, right?
Or under construction.
And, and then we just hired Green to check out the retention basins, but it wasn't their job to troubleshoot. They just needed to tell us if there, there was still water in there after seventy-two hours. I don't think we hired them to troubleshoot anything. But obviously that corner is wet. And like Nancy said, without the site being stabilized, that retention basin will probably never work correctly. But I'm not an engineer and I'm not a soil evaluator. I'm just a planning board member. That's it.
Does anybody else on the committee have a comment or question or anything?
You, you asked the question, what's next? I haven't heard that.
Do either of the engineers present? I mean, we've heard Nick make suggestions about, and, and Andrew in agreement on what, well, everybody agrees it needs to be stabilized, everybody. The other question is, once you get it stabilized, as I said, then the part of this project that Conservation Commission is in control of is going to happen because they've issued the order of conditions and it's been amended and that so they're saying stabilize it and then you can do tree trimming, cutting, whatever it is they've approved. Okay, so, so that's their turf. When it comes to the actual basins, I've heard Nick and Andrew kind of discussed enter an agreement on a couple of things. We got to figure out, I should say, they've got to figure out, somebody's got to figure out why these basins are not draining. And whether or not there is groundwater, because I questioned that myself. I will tell you this, when we did a site visit, and I'm thinking it was, it was cold weather and the original engineer was on site. We were, look out, we were up in the back near the battery area, but as we walked in over the little bridge to get into the site, we saw the big basin. It was a deep hole in the ground. What is there now and what can be seen in the pictures? I realize it's been dug out, it's been cleaned out and obviously had to be filled in again. But what is there now is a basin, is a much larger basin, meaning total ground area. It's not as deep because obviously it's been filled in with appropriate materials, which we hoped would allow it to drain properly. So the overall area of the main basin, when you look at it, it's a much larger surface area that has the crushed stone and all that other stuff on it. And so is the basin that's in the southwest, southeast corner. It's a much longer basin. It's not deep and it never was deep. But it's much longer. And when I saw it and took the pictures, I kept thinking, I would think with this much surface area that has been excavated and filled with sand and whatever other materials on top of those little crushed rocks, stones, this thing should work well. And again, I was surprised to be standing or walking through what I thought was dry stone until I actually stepped on it and then took pictures of water that was, was obviously laying there. So even in areas where I was not seeing water on the surface, because obviously I wasn't there to walk through water. But as I walked through it, there was squishing coming up around my boots and as soon as I moved on, obviously it went down again. But that was telling me under those rocks, there was water in areas that I didn't really expect it. So next steps, so I think everyone agrees, get it stabilized. Make the Conservation Commission happy and address the stormwater infiltration. If this is what's happening, run off. And then the next question is, what's going to happen? Nick suggested doing a test hole and seeing if there is a sediment that's clogging up the filter, the, the mesh or whatever is down there. Is this the plan of action? I mean, we've been on this subject now for over an, just about an hour. We need to come up with, what's the next plan so that this will be on the agenda next month? Hopefully, we're going to have some progress reports. Where do we go from here? And yes, absolutely. From Green International, I think that report needs to be the column on the right clarified. And as Andrew stated, the answer to them is no, it's not to be determined. It's no in those classifications. So where do we go from here? Assuming everyone agrees there's going to be stabilization. CONCOM is going to be offset, so I'm going to just ask Lisa. She can take that up with her committee tomorrow night. Where are we going now with the stormwater basins as far as the Stormwater Committee goes?
We, we had one engineer allude to going to be doing anything in those bases till you stabilize because you're going to just hurt the new, new product.
Right. And I agree with that. I think everybody agrees with that. If anybody at Grasshopper or Nick or, I realize Andrew is not an employee of Grasshopper, but the fact of the matter is, is, can we, I don't want to say assume, I hate that word. If the site is stabilized so that the order of conditions from CONCOM can proceed as far as the trees and all that other good stuff. Is it the plan or is it going to be determined by Grasshopper? Are they going to do a test hole in that pit? What's going to happen? So that when we bring this up again next month, we will have a progress report, hopefully that the area has been seeded, there is evidence of, of some kind of growth, grass, weeds, whatever, and that there is stabilization. And then the next step is, we talked about whether it's a test hole in the basin or not. I'm not asking for a definite commitment. I'm just asking for what's next after stabilization. Well, hearing nothing. Does anyone in, in the public, in the audience wish to comment or ask a question? Come to the podium, please.
Lauren Bosley, sixteen eighty Pine Street. Is Ms. Skula, could, is this a report that I could have up here from?
Yeah, it's a public document. We're, we're, we're discussing, I mean, what's the agenda? That's, that's, it's a, this is a public meeting. It's a document that's been introduced. So yes, it's a public document. I read it into the record because people who watch this tape are not going to know what we're talking about.
Right. Thank you. Just for my observation is when this basin was redone, it never drained properly. We've always had a problem with it, even the second time. We can easily see it through our second story window and it never drained. And it's supposed to be for a hundred-year storm, not just an inch of rain. It's supposed to drain for a hundred-year storm. I have a, a question for the engineer that went, was there a problem with the panels being in the basin? Was there a prob, did that interfere with the basin draining, the panels that were put in the basin?
Not from what we could determine in looking at those pictures. The problem under the panels is a fact, is there's nothing growing, the whole soil. When I say nothing, I'm not talking the entire thing.
Oh, I've seen it.
Way back west and south, except for the basin. This, I got pictures there of green stuff growing.
I can take pictures of your pictures, right?
They're public too.
Thank you. Okay. How would it be determined if it's working? Like, okay, so you go through and you do something else and it doesn't rain for a little while. How do we know it's working?
It would get monitored during or after a storm. Is that correct, Nick or, or Andrew?
Yes, you, in dry condition, you won't know, but when, after a rainstorm, seeing how it's functioning, that's what will give you the indication whether it's functioning as, as intended or not.
So it, a determination would have to not come until rain comes. Is that correct?
That's the only way that I, I could think that you'd be able to determine, yeah.
Okay, so, all right. You were mentioning pipes in a basin. Was I wrong in that? I thought, because I didn't think any of the basins had pipes. Are there pipes in the basins?
There, there are pipes exiting the southern basin.
The southern one. Okay, not the northern one. Okay. If you test for a if you test for a um you know, a test hole that you said, what if there's a drought, can you still tell? Where the groundwater is?
I can let Nick speak to that since he's a soil evaluator, but my understanding is yes, based on um co- soil coloration. Um Nick can speak to it in more detail, but.
Sure, no, I mean uh for the most part, what we designed based off of is the estimated seasonal high groundwater. So that is the highest point that the groundwater you know, relevant, you know, regularly gets to um through the course of history, you know, in that soil profile. So as the water moves up and down, up and down, it leaves markers um typically dark orange rusty looking type markers in the soil where mineral deposits uh that are increased from that moving of the water up and down and it it almost creates a line that we see um in the holes that we dig. So, you know, there may be water coming out in the hole at, say, five feet below the ground. But if I see those markers at three feet below the ground, I'm going to call the groundwater at three feet versus the five feet because that's where it should get to in a really wet situation, you know, say in April, uh a very wet spring, the that's the highest it should get to. And then there's also uh the requirements include a two foot, a minimum of the two foot buffer between that mark that I determined to the bottom of the pond. So there should be a two foot gap from that high estimated high groundwater level in, you know, for nine, ten months out of the year, it's probably going to be four to five feet below that mark. As the water table is, you know, stable. But in the springtime, like I said, or in very wet conditions, you know, like a few years back, we had a very wet uh September, uh when you had those conditions, you're going to get that really high uh record groundwater elevation and that's what we designed based off of and that's what I look for when I go into a hole.
Is there also someone else to verify what you are seeing?
Uh I mean, initially there was, Todd was there um with another soil evaluator when the uh project was being permitted, so um.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're determining it, you, you know, you have a stake in this, but if
No, I do not have a stake in it. I'm a licensed professional who will report the facts and that's it. Uh I'm not going to bend the groundwater elevation uh to help or help anybody's cause or do anything of that nature, that's.
Well, I'm not suggesting you are, I'm just thinking it might be.
Honestly, I'm kind of offended that you would even say that.
Well, I'm I'm.
Excuse me.
I didn't say that.
This line right now, that is inappropriate.
I did not suggest anything.
And you made that comment is inappropriate. Move on to your next question, please.
I just hope that it all gets checked. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment? Mr. Ferry.
The amended orders of conditions for the whole project, Lisa.
Yes.
The the no ones.
Yes.
So it's pretty clear now that there will not anywhere to happen, so it's stabilized.
Right.
Not even the lobby, both both sites for the lobby. So we we're pretty much back to the stabilization only. I don't know if I'm still there or not.
Um, does anybody else on this who has zoomed in wish to make a comment uh or add anything? Because if not, uh I am going to uh uh end discussion on this agenda uh item, it will be on the agenda for next month. Obviously, we're going to need a progress report. If we can get one in the meantime about um and certainly by the report, excuse me, by the next meeting date, what has happened and what's being done to act on some form of stabilization. So does anyone have anything they want to add? If not, we're going to end this discussion and move on to the agenda items because I've got uh roughly thirty-five minutes to get through the rest of this agenda.
Through the chair, Nancy, I just want to throw in um one item, I mean uh it's going to take a few months for vegetation to be established out there. Um as you know, you're not just going to go out there and spray hydro seed and it's going to start. You're going to have substantial growth in a few weeks, especially during June and July.
Yeah, we'll probably have a drought. We'll probably have drought like last year.
But I just want to make sure that that the committee and everybody understands that um hopefully the site will be seeded, but it's a process, it's going to take time, it may need to be reseeded in the fall to fill in some some spots um to really get the the growth to hold. Now typically you want to see eighty percent um before you even consider applying for it to close out a permit. Um, so that's something that's going to take some time to work through and I think once that the site is stabilized and in a good position, I then recommend, you know, cleaning out the basins because obviously there's a lot of sediment that's running there over the last twelve twelve months or so since the work's been done and reevaluate at that time, but that's I I don't think you can fast track the process to growing grass and and making sure everything holds um well in that area.
No, I understand um. The it it is possible though that because of the location of the tree cutting, which is, I'm not talking about the fire break, I'm talking about tree cutting in the southeast area, which was lower the trees, cut the trees to let more sun on the panels. It is possible that in that area, there will be enough um growth that that work may be able to be accomplished, even though there isn't sufficient growth around the basins, correct?
I believe so, yeah, that because that's well outside.
Again, it's mother nature, but I'm just thinking um the worst, the worst the worst bear spots are around the basins themselves. And there is some grass and stuff growing down in the area where I believe is where they want to take down trees to get rid of shade. Um, so again, we'll have it on the agenda for next month. We'll we'll expect a progress report of you know, obviously if it's hot, dry and everything's all the lawns are brown, we know it's, you know, going to tell us there's grass growing, but um at least if we can continue to get monthly reports and more often if there is, if there are developments that we should know about. Um, uh Mr. Hafens, do you have any more comments?
Yeah, just to uh add to what uh Mr. Fasengola was saying, if uh like for cutting the uh the trees for the battery uh brake or buffer uh once the stability, like the seeding has been reapplied uh will will maybe schedule a site visit uh with the with the Conservation Commission and hopefully we can start cutting the trees there because uh like Nick was saying, it 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 will take till maybe the fall and uh.
Okay, um that's a separate piece of property. Mrs. Caldonia, the order of conditions, is it for the original solar farm site? And does it include the fire break property or is that separate?
It only includes the portion that was on it that that level design having.
The actual solar farm.
Right.
So if um Grasshopper can get somebody to cut the fire break, there isn't a conservation concern in that area because my understanding is it wasn't there anything that would affect what is happening. The fire break is on the property that they bought to the west.
Yes, they came back for us for an amended order that included that work. So yes, they would have to adhere to the amended conditions before they could continue with.
All right, but my question specifically is, the amended order of conditions, we've been talking specifically here about the location of the solar farm, which is the property they lease, not the property they bought. Property they lease, the Andrews Trust property, so to speak. That's the solar farm. Does the amended order of conditions include both the land they lease and the land they own, or is the land they own not included in the order of conditions?
Nick, you can answer that.
Sure, so the permit modification was only for the current issued permit, which was for the solar development site.
Okay, which means excuse me, which means if um Grasshopper can get somebody to cut the fire break on the west side, which is the property they bought, that permit condition that you're talking about has, it's not related to it all because that's think issue and that's something that could be done if they could get somebody to do it. Because site stabilization of the solar farm is not inclu- included in the land they bought. Correct?
No, that, no, uh this through the chair, there there is uh forty feet of the leased property in that fire break.
That has to be cleared?
Yes.
So Nancy, the gravel driveway beyond that, it's about thirty to forty feet until you hit the property line. And then so there's good, we modified the order with Lisa for work in that forty foot section to put the culvert in, to do a little uh gravel driveway extension. All of that is on, we'll call it the solar parcel.
Okay, so the answer to my question is technically because of the modification, they are tied together. And saying you got to stabilize the solar farm site under that order is also stopping work on the fire break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, that was the thing I was trying to get answered, okay. Does anybody have anything else? I mean,
Speaking of.
Um all I can say is I guess we'll see you next month or hear from you next month. Uh, a progress report. Uh, hope you can get somebody to seed it, I hope it rains. Um.
Grass or flowers as well.
As I said, at this point weeds would be a blessing, but there aren't weeds either, but anyhow, that's a different story. Does anybody else have anything on this agenda item? If not, then uh thank you very much, uh Mr. Hafens, Nick, Andrew, um Carrie, uh Mike, uh Carrie, you're certainly, you're all welcome to sit in on the rest of the meeting, it's going to be fast. Uh but uh we'll have this agenda item on for next month's meeting and uh we'll have some kind of an update, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you.
Mike? We lost Mike.
Mike ran away.
Uh, would you text Mike and ask him to come on? Just I got this next item, I asked, I wanted him to um give us a follow up on four A. Uh could I get a motion to take four B out of order, please?
I'll make a motion to take item forty uh four A out of order.
Four B out of order.
Four B.
Your second? Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, four B is resignations from Todd Pilling and Charles Mello. Um, we, it was already mentioned uh by Mrs. Caldonia about the service of uh Mr. Mello, uh not only to this committee, but also to the number of years or fifty years for the community. So um I would like a motion also to send a letter to Mr. Pilling, thanking him for his service on the Stormwater Committee because we had some tough projects uh that I'm sure we would have had difficult getting through without him. So is there a motion to send a letter to Mr. Pilling?
Oh, move.
Your second? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Um I'm going to hold on four A to see if, oh, Mr. Mullen? Uh Mr. Mullen, can you hear me?
Uh yes, I'm here, sorry about that.
Oh, um, that's okay. Mike, we're on agenda item four A. Follow up on town meeting action regarding administrative assistant. Um, so my understanding is that the budgets as submitted were approved and can you just give us the a little information about come July first uh about uh some kind of administrative aid support for us?
Uh, yes, um, oh, like actually, yes. So as we planned and anticipated and proposed, um, the um the office manager for the highway department um will be moving from a twenty hour week position to a thirty-five hour week position. Um, and that will um with the restructured um realm that we have planned, um, the highway department to administrative assistant effective um July first um will be uh like will be able to take the Stormwater Committee meeting minutes and and be able to uh provide through through Superintendent Ferry and and like additional administrative uh support for stormwater related activities when needed.
Nice, very good. Any questions, anybody?
Thank you.
I have a question, how many hours a week to me now?
That um, so I mean, I don't believe we're going to have a prescribed amount of hours per week. Um, those hours will be managed um through the highway department and by is uh by Superintendent Ferry as needed.
Yeah, I agree because um when we did have somebody uh the week prior to the actual committee meeting was, we used to call it crunch week. All right, make sure the minutes are ready, get the agenda out, check with whoever, if you've got to invite people, so um, I I think I think it'll just ebb and flow as uh and I think Mr. Ferry is kind of aware of what we were, what we had for support and what we will need. Um, I don't uh I shouldn't say, I don't anticipate another Dora Estates that required all hands on deck and a lot of work, uh a lot which fell to Todd Pilling, but there were others also involved, but I don't anticipate anything strange like that coming out of the woodwork. And I think with the solar farms that we currently have and the housing developments that are in various states, um, I I don't anticipate a big crunch unless something really unexpected happens, so. Um, so thank you very much, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Ferry. And thank Heather Forrest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Woody.
Okay, um active project updates, we're on five B Clearway. Uh, I sent out some, uh the last report I got from Joseph Berthamun that had pictures in it that I felt were interesting. Uh, you all should have gotten those, I think there were four photographs attached and it showed uh work that has the photographs were related to the comments they made in the uh weekly report. So we have been getting weekly reports from Joseph Berthamun, the um botanist, the the uh wetlands expert. It's just that the pictures that were attached to them, it was basically the same storm waters, the silk socks and the and then it was bare ground and green grass and I I just put them all in a file. Uh, but the ones that came in recently, I thought, oh, this is good, I'll send these to the committee because they're really going to get to see what's going on up there. So um, that that project's moving along quite well. Um, so I anticipate uh again, uh more weekly reports and any that have new information and new pictures I'll send out to everybody just so that you can see the progress. Any questions on Clearway? Uh, Blue Wave Solar, Tremont Middle Streets. Um, as I said in the minutes, um, they have cleared the land. Um, I know that the uh I'll call it the groundwork because I don't know what else to call it, uh is continuing. Um, I don't think, I know the solar panels were in storage, they told us that when we did the site visit, but I don't believe the the ground uh is ready for that yet. I think they're still doing. But I don't believe the the ground uh is ready for that yet, I think they're still doing preparation work, I'll call it. But uh the last report when Mr. Pilling did a site visit, uh, I believe all the cutting that had to be done was done and the trees were removed. So that one's moving along, I haven't heard anything uh that they've run into any problems out there, so. Mr. Ferry, sometime in the near future, before the next meeting, I'd like to do a site visit there. And so I'll check with you to see if you're available and Mrs. Caldonia, if you're available. Um, you know, not a big formal visit, but I'd just like to go out and take a look and see what's happening. Um, any questions on Blue Wave Tremont Middle Streets? Thank you. Main Street Water Main Project and paving, uh, there was some mention of there's going to be some paving done and we're just curious, is is this the final or is this just a temporary or a a binder code or whatever, Mr. Ferry?
I I don't have a definitive answer yet, the water district is considering doing temporary measures on to cover their ditch, so the ride abilities improved, realizing that the road has to get dug up again, so. They're trying to keep the taxpayers money in mind rather than the ride ability, which I I can appreciate.
Okay.
But I don't have a definitive answer.
Okay, okay, in in any case, it's it's this is the whole, I think it's the whole thing is this is not the final work because obviously there's going to be sidewalks, this is not the final town end of this, this is still Water District. Uh, work that work is under their control, let me put it that way. Okay, what's that giant pile of black stuff up at the landfill? There's a mountain of, is that ground up asphalt?
Yeah.
Oh, well, quite frankly, I drove by the other day and I just want to commend you as somebody because in in driving by, everything is wide open, there was, I only saw one new storage unit out near the fence. Oh, and all the junk was, all the junk was gone, so I guess everything got sold off and taken away or something. But it was just so wide open, I did a double take and and thought, wow.
Another project in town that hasn't realized yet, very entertaining, get rid of that, it's not usable.
Okay, uh, agenda item six A Conservation Com- Commission Updates on five O eight Customs zero and zero Horton Street Map ten lot fifty three. Yeah, the last report I believe we had on five O eight Customs was that you had gotten a report that um the flagging had been done or was in process.
Yes, so. Did you see, um, I did do a follow up email without back on that to see where they're at in preparation of my meeting tomorrow. I did have this spot, um, that they. Survey faded in there and the product they're putting together. Oh, wait a minute, that's the one project.
Okay, so the minutes for the last meeting just said that. Uh, you reported there was an update from Outback Engineering saying that they have completed the wetland delineation and are working on a site plan and submission for the Conservation Commission.
Yeah. Just one second. Sorry, um, in any case, that that they did complete a plan, a draft plan, they provided it to the uh, Mr. Moon and they're waiting for him to come back with any comments or anything, but.
Who's they, Outback or the ConCon? Oh, okay, and so then they'll be sending something to the Conservation Commission? Okay, okay, so we'll just kind of follow this up because um Conservation is taking the lead on this one and based on what happened, we'll know whether or not we've got to get involved as Stormwater Committee or if any issues that might be stormwater actually get resolved in the process of dealing with ConCon. Um, just a comment, it was clear to me that um, even though we've been dealing with Mr. Harfes and the people in Canada for quite a while, they get confused with what it is we request and that's why I wanted to explain, it's not we're not trying to pull him apart in different directions, technically, the ConCon issue. And the fact, you know, stabilization is the main issue as is ours, it's not two of us pulling apart, we're together on this.
Right.
And that's got to be done, so I I I think it's a, again, I think it's it's a matter of um, two different countries and different laws and all that other good stuff. Um, zero Horton Street, is this the the area that sort of at the end of Smith Street?
Close, close to the church, around the corner.
Oh, all right, the one up on the hill, okay, okay. But the the people that want to make a farm or something.
Yep.
Move them.
Yeah, so I did hear from the wetland scientist, he's received a draft restoration plan, however, the Conservation Commission has obviously that the wetland scientist said there's a lot of work to be done still on the plan.
Okay.
Um. In the property, so I don't know if the gentleman has realized that having goats there isn't really economically feasible.
I mentioned that to him.
Yeah, Mr. Phillips had the benefit of going out to the site with me um, to meet with the engineer and begin with, that was in the winter. We're still waiting, um, we have given them a deadline that we would like to receive an approval of restoration plan by July fifteen.
Okay.
If we don't, we may start finding them.
Okay, all right, so this again, ConCon right now is taking the lead. And if it all gets resolved through ConCon, we don't have to get involved. If in the process of ConCon getting everything resolved, we find out that there are stormwater violations, so it'll just be another update next month on what's happening?
I will tell you that from speaking with this wetland scientist, they're paying speaker and then three to five thousand.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
But we'll know for sure when we have a plan that shows us how much there is.
Yes, yep.
Okay, my question is, at the end of Smith Street, where it intersects with Horton, there's an area right on the side of the road that has been cleared, is that replication from the house that's being built?
If you take a left and head west on Horton Street, yes, it's a replication.
Okay, and it's right up against the road?
Yeah.
Because I remember when we we did the site visit on their plan, they showed it was going to be in that area. And then further, another spot on Horton Street, we did have somebody that was clearing land and they were prevented, they were told to stop, I believe.
Yeah, that's going the other way.
Yes, yeah, okay, so.
On the left side, having, yeah.
Okay, all right.
They have a restoration plan approved by us, however, they had them.
Okay.
Site is stabilized.
Okay. Um, two ten Williams, what the last meeting was, um, we were looking, uh, asking about if there was a site plan that showed the area of disturbance. Again, the definition of disturbance came up. Um. In this, in these minutes, uh, Mr. Pilling stated that he believes the site plan has been approved by the planning board. Um, that there is not involvement by the Conservation Commission, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, um, and part of it is a predeveloped site and we need to further define area of disturbance, so, um. If I can get some information on that, and I'm obviously waiting to hear from EPA. Um, it'll be on the next agenda, uh, I think it'll be on the next agenda simply to let you know whether it's we've got an involvement or not, when I, if I can get the information I've requested, so that'll be our next agenda. Uh. And if it's not ready, I'll delay it and just say, I don't have anything, I'm still waiting. Twenty three seventy one, I believe Mr. Mullin is still waiting for a mass DEP.
Yes, about it, he said he will definitely follow up the mass DEP.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, zero Main Street, this, we talked about this when there was a question about whether or not there was any kind of runoff uh from Dyton Woods and we took care of that and we told the zoning board, go ahead and release the bond, this is not the case. Um, so my next question is, should we be in touch with the property owner where this area is behind his house, uh, should we do a site visit or? Um, I'm wondering if near map would help.
See, well, how do you get the inquiry? I would say to answer that.
Oh, the the inquiry came from somebody who had a conversation with a property owner.
That would be with that.
Okay, I'll see what I can find out, if there's any substance to it, we can put it on the agenda to determine what we're going to do. And if not, then uh I'll just report that I made contact and all right, I really need a description or something of what is supposed to be happening, in other words, a picture or or something that I can, something tangible that I can say, well, here's a picture of what the concern is, so uh I'll follow up on that. Public input, we only have one public here. Nothing?
Nothing. Larry.
Uh, correspondence, I don't have anything, anybody have any correspondence?
There is time.
Approval of the minutes of May seventeen, Mrs. Caldonia had asked for some additional time. And I gave you hot copies because I red penciled some of my own stuff, I will send those minutes out again. So if you want to make a motion to uh put approval on the next agenda, that'll work, so is there a motion?
Thank you.
So.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh.
No, should do a drink.
Wait a minute.
Oh.
I can't afford it.
You stole my thunder.
Are we going to have a new stormwater?
I don't know, um, well, we have two vacancies and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, um. Ask Conservation Commission to recommend uh Mr. Phillips replace uh Mr. Mello. Uh, I don't know what the structure is going to be at the Board of Health, I don't know how they're going to cover positions or a position or anything else, um. I'm glad to have Mr. Phillips coming in from ConCon because I think it's an important committee permission to be represented. Um, so when I find out what's going to happen, I'll let everybody know, I'll send out an email. Uh, but I don't have an answer to that at this point, so.
Oh, there was one more item too.
Yes, go ahead.
Tremont Street, there was some clearing. Will we going to discuss that when they invited to this meeting, um, can we discuss it the next meeting?
Where on Tremont?
Good question.
Did it come up here before, other than the, the only Tremont, I'm thinking of was.
Todd, no, yeah, no, Todd and I have gone out to the neighbor's property and the neighbor had put a.
Oh, I know, I know the location you're talking about. What I heard from the chairman of ConCons was that there was no concerns of ConCon, but then I heard there are endangered species in that area.
Right.
So, uh, I'm waiting to see what ConCon is going to do.
Well.
Is it on your agenda?
It's not on my agenda because I thought we were going to get an update from you, it's created them thirty five thousand.
So what I can show you is more pictures, if you want to look at these.
Along the property. And whereabouts is it?
It's four eighty five, it's next to Giles property, so if you're going west and you go past Gray Terrace, there's a house on the corner.
It's the third house.
It's the third house, it's on the left, there's a sign out front.
Yeah, Brenda Herbeck, so.
Before that.
Before that, okay.
So anyhow, what I did do, if you want to take a look at this, we went to the assessors maps and you can see what it looked like in two thousand nineteen.
Oh, yeah.
Now here's two thousand twenty one and twenty two, so a, the area has been.
Enlarged.
Enlarged, uh, trees are being taken, have already been taken down. Um, I haven't been to the site, but um Mr. Dijjus told me that there has been fill placed all around the property, like crushed stone, like they're going to build us, I I don't I don't know what they're building, but in any case, uh, because there was concern about endangered species and because of the size of this property. Um, if there are endangered species, obviously that's your turf, I can get in touch with them, send a letter.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll have to send a letter as well, but I was hoping to see, was there an email? And they allowed us to take some measurements, I used my laser view um, to take some measurements to determine how much uh patients there were. But I didn't know if you had that email from Todd, I never.
I'll look back.
I never got it.
Um, I can remember discussions, I can tell you definitely it was in writing in an email. But as a result of that, I got these pictures uh, showing what what was there in two thousand nineteen and you can see that it was.
You got to love near map for that.
Yeah, and um, when you look at the most recent one, uh, this is the oldest one, see the blue arrow? That's what we're talking about. This is twenty twenty two because they'll update twenty three in January. See that area? See how much larger it is?
You know, the problem is though, people buy houses and they buy land, they think, hey, these are my trees, I can cut them down. I mean, nobody's, you know, that's what people think.
And they don't know about biowalls and stormwater, what's that?
And how would you know if you're just a regular homeowner, you can't fault some people.
That's why we have our conservation flyer now.
Well, you know.
We hand them up.
Homeowner buys a chainsaw, what's he gonna do with it? Gonna cut some trees.
Or a back.
Right.
So that that just under other business, that just made me think of something. So you authorized me to toss a bristle Plymouth about the brochures and about the calendar. And I did have communication, but going back to when I first contacted uh, Mr. Favalo at BP. Excuse me, we were looking at a total of thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. And so you told me, go ahead and do it, so I'm going to prepare a letter requesting that the town encumber, I think I'll go with fifteen hundred rather than not have enough, because if we don't spend it, it just goes back. But encumber in the current budget, the money for the brochures and the calendars, that's what we used to do with stormwater, we would, they'd give us a special price if we would commit before the end of fiscal year. So, um, I think that's a reasonable amount, um, and that's what was originally presented to me. Oh, uh, you gave me the go ahead to get this done. Obviously, it'll be in the fall, uh, when the students come back. Um, I've got one more picture I want to put in the brochure about cleaning up after your dog. Um, the basic language will be the same, it's just we're going to have it printed that it's more legible, like what ConCon has, but, um. Uh, three thousand brochures, the price, like I say, was very good, because it always is with them and three thousand will last us a long time. So that's just a progress report and update on the calendars of the brochures, so. Uh, if there's nothing else, Mr. Woods?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? And Mr. Ferry shaking his head no.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, thank you, everybody. So you're going to stop recording now?
Stop recording. Thank you, cable.
We've got three to five three, I never thought that would happen.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't think Brook Street was going to go that long, so is, can you kill that, Mr. Ferry?
Good evening. Um, I don't know if we got anywhere.
Uh, shut the whole thing down.
What, with green energy and?